To make. The first one is a sort of general informational announcement. Yesterday Chestnut Hill Realty gave the town notice that a revised 40B proposal for Hancock Village will be submitted to the Massachusetts Development Financing Agency this week. The original proposal was withdrawn on February 15th. The new project appears to have substantially the same footprint in the green belt with smaller buildings. There are seventy-nine fewer units and parking spaces are reduced by one hundred. The five-story apartment building appears to be reduced to four stories, but it's on the same site with a similar footprint. Across the number of units now, which will be one hundred and ninety-two, there would be thirty-eight affordable ones distributed throughout the site. From what we've seen, and we have not seen the proposal submission, we've just seen a very simple sort of site plan. This proposal will have about the same impact on the site and the green space as the original one did, and therefore the town will oppose it. However, we'll see, we'll need to see the actual plans in order to make a detailed assessment, and we'll get those when the proposal is officially submitted. Moving on to other topics. On Thursday Brookline Farmers Market will open the season with fresh local fruits and vegetables, cheeses, jams, fish, meat, and plants. It will be open from 1:30 to 8:00 PM in the Center Street parking lot in Coolidge Corner. We've been told that there is an excellent local strawberry crop this year, and Market Manager Arlene Flowers says there'll be a new vendor with a pie in a cone for us to try. The market will be held every Thursday until October, but not on Thursday, July 4th. And just so that you know, the winter market in the arcade building has ended for the summer, and Manager Lynda Plazagna says that the leader management company will welcome winter market back to the arcade in the fall. So we'll be having our summer market followed by our winter market, followed by our summer market, and we'll be well supplied. Also, on this Thursday in the evening at the Coolidge Corner Branch Library, there will be a presentation on the historical, architectural, and cultural significance of St. Aden's to the Coolidge Corner neighborhood hosted by the John F. Kennedy National Historical Site, the Brookline Historical Society, and the Campaign to Preserve St. Aden's. Other events people want to mention?
Yes.
Selectman Benka?
The Bee Bear Book Club.
Bee Bear. You really like them.
I do. Is having its premiere or the open house starting the second season tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at BATV's offices at 46 Tappan, top floor. Can watch the show, get a DVD, meet the authors, play on the set, meet the puppets, snacks, crafts, and even more. So tomorrow at BATV from 4:00 to 6:00 PM.
Sounds like fun. Selectman Wyszynski?
And I'd like to mention the revival of the Clark Park Lark after a hiatus of about twenty years. This is this Saturday, 1 to 3, with a rain date of next Saturday, the 22nd. This is to celebrate the grand reopening of the Clark Park over on Cypress Street. And if you haven't been there, I strongly suggest you check it out. They've, the park and Rec Commission has done a fantastic job with some really great place structures, and it's a real, real, real nice park.
Yes, and lovely to see it back, having been out of circulation for a while. Other announcements from board members?
I have none.
Oh, okay.
But I'm putting the Clark Park Lark right in my calendar as we speak.
Just a footnote, and I didn't get right down the details. The League of Women Voters is holding its annual meeting at the restaurant at the town golf course on Thursday night at 6:30 PM, and the Executive Director of the Brookline Housing Authority will be their featured speaker. So there's several, Thursday's a busy day this week. Mr. Klutner, you had a couple of items you wanted to update us on?
Yes, if I could. Madam Chairman, the conversion to our pay-by-space method of parking in our municipal parking lots was implemented on Monday morning, first thing. The conversion went very smoothly and the machines were activated. Our parking control officers and other personnel were out in force on Monday morning to assist patrons and assist with the implementation. I did want to say that I personally observed some parking in the Center Street lot and noticed that people are still going and taking their parking receipt, printing out a parking receipt and going back to their vehicles. And that's the whole point of pay-by-space. You no longer have to do that. You no longer have to queue up at a machine that's nearby your car. You can go to any of the machines in the lot, and once you punch in your parking number where the space you're in, you can park, print out a receipt, but you no longer have to display that on your vehicle, so you can go on your way. And so we want to, and we will continue to encourage people.
And where will people find their numbers?
The numbers are on a small sign in the front of the parking space. You can't miss it. So they are going very well, but I did want to encourage people that they don't have to wait in line. They can use any machine at all, even heading towards their shopping destination, and once they punch in their, their number, they can go off on their, on their way. The other point I wanted to follow up was from last week. We talked about the elimination of the Galaxy wireless service, and I know the board had a couple of questions, and Kevin Stokes is here to just to give you a brief update on the, the conversion from the Galaxy wireless system.
Good evening. Kevin Stokes, Chief Information Officer. Yes, just if I could elaborate on that a little bit, as discussed last week, Galaxy Internet Services of Newton has notified the subscribers that they will no longer be in business, so they will cease operations as of June 30th. This obviously impacts the town in several fashions, but in terms of subscribers, they were notified that there, there won't be an alternative, you know, certainly in the short term. This would also impact the, the commercial areas and the parks where we have free service as well. If you may or may not be aware of, we, the town is actually using the Wi-Fi network for a couple of additional purposes in terms of, in addition to the subscriber usage. And that was effectively the model that we had created with Galaxy, is that they built a town-wide Wi-Fi network. They tried to fund and support the network by offering subscription services to the public, and the town was able to use it internally for several, for several key initiatives, namely public safety and some of our parking meters. So we have a little bit of a challenge in our hand in terms of the June 30th deadline is a very tight timeline in terms of how do we actually transition our usage and our reliance on that network quickly. Pleased to say that we'll be able to continue to operate the internal portion of the network, you know, certainly in the short term. In fact, we're largely transitioning it from Galaxy to Town IT, my department in the short term. So this will allow us to have an orderly transition of our public safety folks, our parking meters, and the other pieces of technology that rely upon the Wi-Fi network there. So it's certainly shouldn't be a surprise, given the nature of technology and, you know, some of the rapid change that takes place. However, we're, you know, we're in a situ, the situation is what it is, so to speak, but we, we're hopeful that in terms of all of the things we rely upon the network, we have a, we will have a very good plan going forward, but we're not in a crisis mode in terms of having to do something drastic in the short term. I think we'll have a orderly transition to whatever the next technology is that will give us speed, performance, hopefully a cost benefit that we can be happy with and, you know, and a better future, so to speak. So having said that, I'll.
Kevin, could you just, could I ask Kevin if he could follow up with the board's question last week about the Housing Authority properties?
Sure. Double-checked the, the data with Galaxy. Aside from a particular student that we provided access to this year, we didn't have any actual BHA subscribers on there. And just to step back, we had met with Mr. Clunin a couple of times over the years, and their concern was really around getting better technology in the community rooms. It was really less about access. They had access alternatives from other vendors, so the, what Galaxy was able to provide really wasn't that important to the BHA folks. They really wanted better, better computers, frankly. And over the years, we've been able to help with some of those needs. So other than a couple of individual circumstances over the last couple of years, for the most part, we haven't had a lot of subscriber base, but we have been able to assist in other manners, mainly at the community rooms with, with various technologies.
Other questions for Mr. Stokes? Yes, Mr. Wyszynski?
So are, in the short run, are we going to be using the, the hardware and it's, it's connected to our network, so you're, you're just taking it over?
We're taking it over, for lack of a better term, correct.
Okay.
Because I seem to recall that we had some discussion about where antennas could be installed, so they will be left wherever they are for Galaxy?
No, we actually have facilities to remove the equipment when it's all said and done. In the short term, right now, to get from where we are to where we're going to be, we're going to need to operate the network and continue to operate it.
Okay.
Flawlessly. You know, as we transition to whatever the next technology is, that, part of that plan has to be the removal of the, the assets that are on the poles.
So eventually we, but, but they're going to stay there, they'll be in place for the moment?
For the moment, correct, yes.
Other questions?
That was my question. Now, I, I had actually thought that, that Galaxy was supplying the common areas of the Housing Authority buildings, but I gather that that is not the case.
That's correct. That, that has never been the case, actually.
Okay. All right, good. And, and they are supplying the Police Department laptops now?
Well, we, the laptops are owned by the town. The access to, to the licensed network is provided by Galaxy.
It's from their network and the repeaters on the poles.
Yes, and that's what we'll take over ownership of. We are in the process of doing that now.
And then where do we go from there? How do we, because there were areas that were difficult to serve within the town.
And I think that's part of the larger conversation, because the, to step back a little bit, this technology sort of provided a solution when there was a quite, in the world before 4G, so to speak, 3G coverage was very spotty, and there was a lot of, a lot of holes in everybody's network. 4G has really kind of limited the impact of an outdoor technology like Wi-Fi. It's not perfect yet, and that's part of our discussion. So certainly moving forward, Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, and, you know, some of the other key users, and I are going to have to sit down and kind of make sure that we've got a plan that's comprehensive in nature so that it addresses all of those issues to satisfactory, satisfaction of everybody involved.
And just to be clear, I'm, I think I know the answer to this. Galaxy was not in any way involved in the internal systems at Town Hall where we now do not, where we have wireless telephones, for example, VoIP?
No, that's a, that's an internal system.
That's nothing to do with Galaxy.
Yeah, that's completely town initiative all the way around.
And how about any kind of involvement in our schools providing technical?
No, that's an internal network that we manage as well. I will point out that in this build, in this conference room, as well as downstairs and on the first floor, there's a Galaxy Wi-Fi signal. It's called TOB Wireless. That'll be replaced by an internal.
That was part of what I was remembering, because I know that people coming to Town Hall would be given the option of joining that wireless. So let's just say someone comes into Town Hall with a wireless device, will they be able to access the internet or not?
Yes, we'll have a, a guest network that actually.
Okay, you'll create a guest network.
As soon as we transition into the next fiscal year, we can purchase it, it'll be here.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, do we, we have an agreement with Galaxy that we can use their equipment on the poles to service our DPW and public safety until we're ready to transition?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Obviously working with Town Council to make sure we fully understand all of the clauses of the contract. But there's nothing that we're concerned about at this point.
Thank you, Kevin.
Other questions for Mr. Stokes? Sounds like you're going to be a busy guy for a while.
Be an interesting summer, yes.
Yes, well, I, I hope you find it, I hope you find solutions as well as find it interesting.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, moving along, our miscellaneous calendar minutes from June 4th, are there any corrections or additions?
I do have a few edits.
You will pass them into Kate, please. And I move that we approve the minutes of June 4th as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is a rebate from National Grid. Mr. Simmons, you going to tell us about this? This is one of those things where you either keep us very hot when it's hot outside or very cold when it's cold inside, right?
No.
Cold outside. No, no.
For the devotion house, where you moved the oil-fired furnace and replaced it with a gas-fired furnace, and the gas company gave us a rebate check.
Oh, that's very nice. Okay, questions for Mr. Simmons?
No questions.
Then I move that we accept a rebate in the amount of $750 from National Grid in connection with energy-efficient equipment at the devotion house.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Next item is a transfer in the Selectmen's budget.
Good evening. So this is a transfer actually in the unclassified section of the budget.
Whatever is that?
That's kind of the miscellaneous accounts that don't really have a home.
Yeah, right.
So, so the town meeting account ran over due to the electronic voting, the staffing that we needed to provide for that. You'll know, you remember that in 14, we actually added money to the budget for that, so it won't be a problem in 14. But this year, we actually needed to move money, and we had a small surplus in property insurance, so.
Okay, questions for Ms. Goff? Hearing none, I move that we approve a transfer within the Selectmen's appropriation of $4,000 from property insurance to professional technical services. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you. And Chief, we now have urban area security initiatives for personnel protection equipment. Exactly what is that?
Well, we, we have a couple of grants I'm asking the board to, to accept on our behalf, but personal protective equipment is the, the outer, it's outer ballistic shields that the officers can wear when they're going into an active shooter situation or something like that. And as you know, we've been members of UASI since its inception, and this year we put in a, a proposal to fund some training, some personal protective equipment, and some night vision equipment and things like that that will enhance our ability if we run into a search situation or an active shooter situation. With the plan that we put in place, the UASI agreed to fund $150,000 worth of equipment for us. I know that we have been exploring where we're going to do our purchases and things like that, and I think it's going to be just about all used up pretty quickly, with the exception of the training funds. Once we get the equipment in, then we can start training, especially the SIT team, but also the entire department on some of the tactics and the equipment that we'll be purchasing. So that's one grant. And then the second grant, also from UASI, is, allows us to wrap up the, the security enhancements around the public safety building. You had approved an amount around $67,000 a couple of months ago, several months ago. And with that, we started our upgrades of the, the locking system throughout the public safety building, the camera system, and the interior and exterior, and some of the, the servers that we use to keep our cameras. We found some holes in the camera system, basically in the cell block area, as well as the external cameras. A couple of them needed replacements, and we didn't have card swipes on like our Sallyport and our exterior garage doors, so this additional 1,700 and plus would go for that. And that's been approved, subject to your approval. And the third thing isn't really a grant, it's a piece of equipment that they've given to us. We had put a proposal in because during our last budget cycle with Mr., our conversation with Mr. Klutner, Melissa and Sean, we brought up the fact that the radio systems in the, in the both police and fire were no longer going to be covered by Motorola. We purchased them in 1997, at least the police were purchased in 1997, and we're told there's no more parts, and they're not going to be giving us any support. So it's a pretty expensive piece of equipment, goes for about $350,000 all told. We did make a proposal to UASI because of the interoperability capabilities of the new system. They did accept our proposal. We thought it was going to be accepted piecemeal at this time, but they sought to fund the project totally. So it's been approved, and we're to expect delivery of the equipment. They're going to pay for the equipment and give it to us over the next couple of weeks to be installed by June 30th.
Wow.
And that will upgrade the, the interiors of all the radios at the, at the dispatch center, and also the hardware and the software that we have down in the basement that supports the system. I know that at, at Town Meeting, I was asked a question about broadband. This radio system is broadband capable, so if we are forced to make that change in eight or 10 years, this equipment, equipment will still be serviced and be operating at that point. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to take advantage of it.
I, I know you personally have been involved in some conversations about radio frequencies.
Yes.
This is going to be consistent with the frequencies that are currently in use, or will it be flexible, adaptable? What, what's the?
It's, it's going to support both systems.
Oh, good.
It's, it's going to replace the core. We're going to link with Cambridge, and we're going to be fully interoperable today or 10 years from now if they change the system. It's really a, like I said, it's a great opportunity. It's the state of the art, and it's going to take us with, whichever direction the government makes us go, this will be capable of supporting us.
Well, that's good to know. Questions for the chief?
Yeah, are, are the other communities that are on the frequencies now that, that you share, are they going in the same route?
Right, right now, that I know of, State Police is this route, Boston Police and Cambridge.
Okay.
Our proposal was put in two, in two forms, one being the piecemeal that we thought, and then the whole system. And the way it worked out, I don't know whether the, some of the other community, I don't know whether they didn't try to take advantage of this grant. We did, and, and we got the whole $350,000 worth of equipment. So, but, but you'll have to, I think you'll see, depending on how old their consoles are, and their, and their police and fire stations, that they will all go with this equipment going forward.
They'll follow the same route?
Yep.
Okay.
It's sort of difficult to use the marathon experience, but I guess in fairness, you must have had opportunities to see where our ability to communicate with our, our other community, public safety, safety offices, officers, worked well or not. And are there any things that you and your colleagues learned from that that will inform the way you want to go in the future?
Oh, I mean, I think that one of the things that we did learn is that our radio channels, our radios themselves have a lot of channels, and everybody has to be up to speed when you're told to go over to like Area Wide 4. You have to know where it is on your radio to go over there. We train as a department. We have our IT people, Scott Wilder and Steve V., that will come down and train, you know, this is how these new systems work, this is how your radio channels go. But if you don't do them often, you, you do kind of struggle with them because there's a lot of channels.
Sure.
So I think that's one of the big takeaways, is that training has to be area-wide, not only get this equipment in, but people got to be trained in how to use them. Eventually, everybody got to where they're supposed to be, but I'm sure that there was some pains getting there.
Sure, all right. Selectman Goldstein?
Thank you. Chief, does this grant money come with any new conditions in our relationship with the granting authority, or with Homeland Security, or federal agencies, or anything like that? No new protocols?
No new protocols.
Okay.
Nope, thank you.
Okay, we ready to take a vote? I'm going to add the radio system to the vote. It's not printed in the calendar, and I, I just feel like we ought to vote to accept it along with everything else. So I move that we accept the following urban area security initiative grants for the Police Department. $150,000 for personnel protection equipment, $17,154 to be used for critical infrastructure improvements to the public safety building, and a new radio system for our police dispatcher facility valued at about $350,000. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
And I hope all of these arrive in good time and are put to good use.
They're going to put to good use. We do hope they arrive before June 30th.
Right, right, right. Well, sure, I'm sure they will.
Thanks.
I would, unless someone wishes to hold one, recommend that we take the next batch of items which are all about temporary alcoholic beverage licenses as a group. That would be items F, G, and H. Oh, yeah. E, sorry, E, F, G, and H. And I will move them in the language of the calendar. I move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Boston University College of Fine Arts for June 20th, 2013. A temporary license for Pine Manor College in connection with graduation on June 21st. Temporary wine and malt beverage license to the Puppet Showplace Theater for June 28th and June 29th. And a temporary license to the Lars Anderson Auto Museum for events on June 19th, June 25th, and June 18th. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And the last item is a revised charge to the override study committee, and I believe since we already voted one, probably we should move to reconsider voting the charge. So I will move that we reconsider voting a charge to the override study committee. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And now, Selectman Benka, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, thank you. The charge has been slightly revised from the charge that we voted a couple of weeks ago, and in, in part, it arose from a discussion that I had with Alan Morse, who is the chair of the school committee, and I told him that I would be more than happy to have a co-chair representing the school committee. I think, given the importance of the schools in this, in the override study, and given the pressures from the schools with regard to population growth and the need for operating in capital dollars, I think it's important that the school committee have a member co-chairing this committee. And the, the date has also changed. We had a couple of dates in. The March 1st, 2014 target remains in here with respect to needs for the fiscal year 15 budget. And the schools have asked that on March 1st, we, to the extent feasible, provide projected longer, a projection of longer-term needs and/or the plans for further examination with regard to longer-term needs. And that also seemed very sensible to me. The bullets are substantially the same, but I actually look forward to a co-chair being named by the school committee and going forward. This, this work will be intellectually challenging for all of us and of great importance to the town, and we're going to be looking for individuals with expertise and experience in financial management, demographics, financial efficiencies, statistical analysis and economics, architecture and construction, and those who have the ability to work with forecasting and modeling, because we'll be looking at matters such as the projected student population growth and classroom usage as we go forward, and, and trying to deal with the uncertainty with respect to those elements. So we'll be building on work that's been done to date, including the work of the B-Space Committee, which three of, the three of you are sitting here.
Everybody else.
Everybody else now, now up here is involved with, and we'll be building on the data and research that were made available to the B-Space Committee and used by them. So I'm looking forward to co-chairing what will be a group, I'm sure, of dedicating So I'm looking forward to co-chairing what will be a group, I'm sure, of dedicated and capable and hardworking citizens who will, I think, be making a great contribution to the community.
And who will have to be dedicated because, boy, is there a lot of information to be mastered here.
Absolutely. So we will be putting out the call, I think.
As we speak, I hope.
Yeah. Applications or expressions of interest should be sent to the selectmen's office. And we will be starting from there.
Okay. Questions from other members of the board? No? Then I move that we adopt the revised charge to the override study committee. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next item is a grant of locations for the NSTAR Company. Mr. Ditto and friend.
Good evening. NSTAR is here tonight to request permission to install conduits and manholes in four streets in the town, in the Gardner Road, Royal Road, Linden Street, and Linden Place. The PPW has reviewed the plans. We take no exception and recommend approval. This is a item that requires a public hearing. So notices were sent out statutory seven days in advance of this hearing. And we have representative from NSTAR here tonight to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Maybe if we could just hear a little bit about when the work will be done, how much disruption it's likely to cause to traffic flow.
Good evening. My name is Renee Banks Clark from NSTAR. I would, I don't have an exact start date, but they would, they're looking to start in about two weeks.
Two weeks.
And Ms. Banks Clark, do you even, can you tell us the duration? How much time from the start might be?
Each amount of, for the amount of conduit that is here, it typically takes about a day for 50 feet.
Uh huh.
So if you estimate about that.
Okay. All right. That's helpful.
So we have Gardner Road is 72 feet and a manhole. And Linden Place, 160 feet. And then 90 feet and a manhole and.
Royal Road, 123.
So each of these.
I'm sorry. That would be for the installation of the conduit. Then we'd have to have a cable crew come back and pull the cable through.
Uh huh. Okay. So, but the biggest project here would be probably done within a week. Does that seem ballpark-ish to you based on?
Yes, I would say.
Yeah, okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to these two grants of location on Gardner Road, on Royal Road, and on Linden Street, and on Linden Place? Seeing and hearing none, I move that we approve the grants of location on Gardner Road, northeasterly, 72 feet. On Royal Road, northerly at Gardner Road, 123 feet. Oh, okay. So we have to vote them separately. All right. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then secondly, I move that we approve, excuse me, a grant of location on Linden Street, westerly, approximately 160 feet, a distance of 90 feet with one manhole. And on Linden Street, approximately 60 feet north of Linden Street, a distance of 125 feet with one manhole. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wyszynski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I would just note that there's Linden Street and also Linden Place.
Linden Place, right.
Just to clarify.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
May you dig safely.
And quietly.
And quietly. All right. Our next item is some interviews. We'll begin with the Walnut Hills Cemetery trustees. Mr. Cook, would you just come forward to the microphone?
Yes.
Tell us who you are and why you are interested.
My name is Bob Cook. I'm on the planning board. I live very close to the Walnut Hills Cemetery. I've enjoyed walking my beagles there at least once a week, if not more often. And I have, in the past, been director of the Arnold Arboretum for 22 years. And I was on the Forest Hills Cemetery Board for eight years, plus their education committee for another six or so. So I thought that if there were a vacancy and you were seeking someone to fill the post, I would offer my services.
Questions for Mr. Cook?
I have no questions, but I have a thank you to Bob for re-upping on your service to the town.
Right. And I would say, you seem to be especially well qualified, both having served on a cemetery before, but also with your experience at Arnold Arboretum. Can't even get the words out. Arboretum. Because much of our care involves landscaping and plant materials. And that's very important.
As I well know from my service on the Forest Hills Board.
Right. Okay. We may be taking our vote later this evening. And thank you very much for your interest. We will be in touch with you after the vote is taken.
Fine, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, welcome back.
Good evening. Thank you. How are you? Nice to see you again.
We are pleased to have you back with us, even if it's to look over the cemetery.
Right, right. Nice to be here.
So, tell us why you're interested in this?
I, as a kid, grew up near Walnut Hills Cemetery. Rizley Road is kind of the southeast border of the cemetery.
Yeah, right, right.
And the most direct route, actually, to Temple Amherst for Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts and Church of Infant Jesus, religious education, and Baker School. If I missed the bus, was through that cemetery. Oftentimes, a very meandering route. But I got to know it very well as a kid. And as I grew into adulthood, began to appreciate it much more. It's just a tremendously beautiful place in Brookline, perhaps, I think, maybe the most beautiful place in Brookline in terms of its size. And would appreciate the opportunity to just help the group continue that and make it, if possible, even more beautiful. And work more closely with the town on how we pay for all of the stuff that maybe needs to be done down the road.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Hayes? Well, I have to agree with my colleagues that we are very pleased to see you back with us in a different role. And I'm very happy that you're interested and willing to give us your services. We will be taking a vote later this evening, and we'll let you know.
Fine. I would just ask one question. You say that you're active in several historical societies and groups. And I was just wondering what those are.
Well, there's the Mass Historical Society, the Brookline Historical Society, then the Mass Military Historical Society, for the most part.
So, I mean, that also has some connection to this.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Yeah. And as you are, I'm sure, very aware, this is also one of the places that we use as our, that we honor our veterans on Memorial Day because of the various special areas there.
Yes, I am.
Appreciate the fact that you're a veteran.
I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Next is Brookline Commission for the Arts. Sarah Catherine Morris, are you with us, Ms. Morris? No?
She may be, I think she is.
Ah, Ms. Morris. Sure. We're running a little ahead of schedule, which is very unusual. So just take.
It's very good timing.
Take a minute.
Take a breath.
Take a breath. Don't feel rushed. Yes, yes, we see. You came equipped, good. So we would just like you to come forward to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in the commission.
My name is Sarah Morris. I'm originally from North Carolina. Pretty much brand new to Brookline. I moved here in January. And I'm still going to use the New England weather. It's throwing me for a loop a little bit. But I also attend Boston University's Masters of Science and Arts Administration Program. And they really encourage us to get to know our specific neighborhoods and our specific towns. And I thought it would be a wonderful opportunity to see how the arts are affecting Brookline and the surrounding areas.
And I gather part of your arts experience is as a dancer?
It is. I was trained 16 years as a ballerina. And I was injured when I was 20 and had to stop.
Too bad. I'm sorry to hear that. Well, we appreciate and benefit enormously from our arts commission. They provide the work that you see on the walls here. We have a program called Town Hall Walls, which is juried. And they're changing exhibits in addition to the other things they do. In part, you probably are familiar with the fact that they make grants through the Massachusetts Cultural Commission. So, questions from Ms. Morris?
I'll ask you a question. I was just speaking with the administrator of the Arts Commission a few minutes ago about a program we started last year, which is our poet laureate program. And I'll just ask you generally, do you have any interest in the literary arts? Any ideas in matter how we may enhance any art program in town?
I actually worked at the public library from my very, very small hometown. It's Louisville, North Carolina. And I was a library page there. And I also work at Barnes &amp; Noble. And I actually now work at Houghton Mifflin. So really into literature and really into publishing. And the main thing is to make poetry especially open to everyone. I have several friends who, throughout high school and college, really struggled with understanding that poetry did not need to be an epic poem. It did not need to be long. It was really what you were feeling. And it's helping people understand that poetry is for everyone and that it's your feeling, and so there is no wrong poetry. If that makes any sense.
Actually makes great sense. Okay. Any other questions?
Just a comment. When I was asked in an English class, or when a poem was assigned in an English class when I was in high school, apparently there is wrong poetry.
English teachers do have a tendency to do that. I was raised by a literary fanatic. And my mother always taught me that books are for everyone, poetry's for everyone. You just have to find your niche in the poetry or the book.
I'll just comment too, Sarah. Thank you for, you know, being so brave. You've only been here, you've been here less than six months. You're already coming and getting involved. That's a model, as far as I'm concerned.
Right. And I would say, the fact that we discovered your interest in poetry serendipitously because we really are happy that we have a poet laureate and we are delighted to have someone who already was committed to poetry. So that's nice, too. Okay. Any other questions? Then thank you very much for coming. We are not making appointments tonight, but we will be doing it, I hope, in the near future. And you'll hear from us in writing. But in the meantime, you're free and encouraged to attend meetings. And they're usually posted on the town's website. So when the meeting's scheduled, you can look at the calendar.
Okay.
Find out about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So our next category is access television. And we have two candidates. Sharon Hogan, would you come forward, please? Just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. I lived in Brookline 25 years ago. We lived here for about 10 or 15 years. Moved to North Carolina.
Another North Carolina connection.
Lived in Chapel Hill for about 22 years. And just recently, we moved back in September to Brookline. I have an MBA in finance from Northeastern. I've worked for, been the finance director of various nonprofits. That's been the focus of my finance career. And I, after I moved, I'm also a realtor with Chobi Hoy. So that's my primary work right now. But I reached out to the Chamber of Commerce looking for volunteer opportunities. And he connected me with Brookline Access Television, which seemed very exciting and very different nonprofits than what I've been used to. I worked for Legal Services and the State Office of Indigent Defense Services. That more downtrodden nonprofit world in the BATV is just very exciting and creative and positive. So I like that. And I know they need some finance expertise on their board. And I'm happy to offer that.
Sounds like a match. Questions for Ms. Hogan?
I will say that this is a nice time because BATV is very actively involved in providing educational services in our school system. And clearly is on a growth or, you know, they're at an innovation point in their development. So it's a good time to think about being part of it.
Yeah, I would just note that both.
And he's been promoting.
I don't know if you were here earlier, but there is a Bee Bear Book Club, which is a reading group. And they are starting their second season tomorrow with an open house.
That's right.
BATV.
We're all going, yes.
So, and I note that both of the applicants expressed a particular interest in children's programming, which is terrific.
And I would say, very, very important these days because our kids are being torn in so many directions by so many exciting opportunities and media out there. Okay.
Just say thank you for, because I know how busy real estate brokers are, especially right now. And thank you for volunteering for this.
Sure. Thank you.
Well, we do appreciate your interest. We're not taking a vote on the BATV tonight, but we will, I hope, in the next week or two. And you'll hear from us. And I can say, since I know there are vacancies, there's a highly, high probability that you'll be appointed.
That's good to hear. I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. And the next candidate is Laura Noonie. Started to say Noonan, but I see it's Noonie. And you're particularly interested in children's programming.
I am. I've been working at WGBH in their Kids Interactive Group since 2001. Which means I make websites for kids and games that all have a curriculum to them because everything at GBH is attached to an educational curriculum. And one of the reasons I was interested in working with BATV is that they are very interested in, they feel as though their connection with the high school is there. And they're looking to reach out to younger children to understand how they can engage younger children and their families, how they can, what kinds of programs they might be able to either broadcast or really, you know, bring in and offer as services to kids. And I worked, I was the producer for the Zoom website for many years after being a child. And so I'm really, I think a lot about like, buy kids and for kids. What can we do? How can we facilitate that feeling of empowerment? What kinds of projects can we provide for them so that they can feel this satisfaction and of creation, of getting something that they've done out to the world and claim it? So that's my particular interest.
Well, sounds like a good addition. Questions?
My.
You want to talk about bears again?
No, no. My daughter is past the Zoom.
It happens very fast.
But I'm curious, how does, what does GBH do in terms of tying their programming into websites? You said websites and games.
Right. So every, it depends on the program. But every season, when we put a proposal out for a grant, there is always an educational curriculum along with that. Sometimes a series has a certain educational curriculum. Like Martha Speaks, I don't know if you're familiar with it, has the, an oral vocabulary acquisition curriculum. And every year, they present that. Some, like Arthur, have a social emotional curriculum that's tied with literacy. And so each season, they approach a particular aspect of it. I, Zoom had a science curriculum. I don't know if you remember. And so, every season, they would look at a particular aspect of science and then really focus on that. And what we did with our games and our website is then create games that would provide kids with an additional learning opportunity, sort of not hands-on because it's virtual, but something that would help them learn a particular concept. And so, each of the games has a very specific curriculum, if you want, you know. I made a game about geysers, and kids were, would have to build a geyser. So, then, you know, so that they learned all the components and the right amounts of things. And, you know, that was just one thing that we were, you know, it was one small sliver of the curriculum because I found that if you try to do too much in a game, kids don't learn anything. You have to learn just one little thing, so.
Did it follow a televised program on geysers?
Yeah, well, so that was one of the topics that the television show dealt with. This is, in this particular one was Fetch with Ruff Ruffment. And what we would do is we'd consult with the curricular advisor and lots, and we had a science advisor from Brandeis and all sorts of people to figure out the best way to teach particular things. And what we'd find is the sort of a nice marriage between what kids really needed to learn and what we could effectively teach on the web. I mean, there are some things that work really well and others that don't. We have to rely really on sight and sound particularly, so smell, taste, touch, not so much. But so, that was how we would do it, and depending on the budget, we would do probably five games a year that would, again, focus on--
Very interesting. I have to ask, are you able to track participation? I know for interactive things like this, you can. And I guess my question is, do you feel that you have at least a fair ability to compete with all of the other games that are out there?
So, we do. We use Google Analytics, as everyone does these days. And the websites on PBS Kids get a phenomenal amount of traffic, phenomenal. And so, I don't have comparisons with Disney, but I feel like the numbers are quite strong there. It depends on the program, and we lose kids at, you know, they top out at about second grade, then they're like, PBS is for babies, and then we don't get them back until Nova, I think. So, it's a very small window where we're trying to give them sort of the curiosity, feed them with the joy of learning, and hopefully, I mean, a lot of our curriculum is about habits of mind, where we're trying to instill in them that curiosity that will hopefully help them want to learn more so that we aren't holding their hand in teaching them, but we're hoping to provide them with the skills to ask questions and figure out the answer on their own. So, that's--
Well, I think it's a wonderful thing. There are a lot of things I don't want kids to get addicted to, but this seems to be the right kind.
Yeah, we always, we have, at WGBH, we're really lucky enough to have a wonderful education group. And so, as part of our, and I'm talking a lot about GBH, but as part of the proposal process, we always submit education outreach. And that group is really tasked with creating that bridge between the curriculum we've created for the national programming and local kids. So, they take it to the street, really. So, yeah.
We have some lucky kids who think they're playing games and they're actually learning. It's like, that's a good deal. By the way, a very popular BATV program is the Board of Selectmen. Is there a game that you could think of, maybe modeled on the Whack-a-Mole?
We could. We could totally do that. You guys sit your heads, and we'll just touch.
Okay, yes.
So, what are some of the opportunities to apply some of that to access television?
So, I've been thinking a lot about the different programs that they have and also how we might bring more families in just to the facility because I'm thinking that, I don't know if we really want kids necessarily watching more television. They're going to be doing that, but how can we get them engaged in making television? And in what ways can we give them that sense of empowerment? And BATV right now has these wonderful, I think they're calling them the Gorilla Packs, but it's this really brilliant idea of Peters where you've got a mobile, basically a mobile studio in a little backpack. So, a kid could take this out with their family and do an on-street interview. Or, I mean, the possibilities are endless because they have everything they need to make a video and TV right there in that backpack. So, I've been thinking about ways in which that we could broaden that. I thought that maybe we could encourage sort of a story core with kids and their families so that kids are interviewing their parents, and then they can make that interview into something that then certainly the family would want to see. But, you know, with this idea, again, my experience from Zoom is that kids love to make things and then see their stuff for other people to see. So, to give them something that they can make that other people would then also see, they get that feeling of, I did it. So, just sort of thinking about how we can use the facilities at BATV to bring people in or to take what we've got there and go out to the public and also bring them in. So, that's kind of how I'm thinking.
Okay.
I--
One more.
I just, no, I just actually want to apologize to Ms. Hogan. Clearly, kids' television is a lot more interesting than financial management, but financial management is--
Without that, though, we can't do it.
No, I was just going to say the financial management is equally important, so thank you both.
Absolutely, absolutely. But thank you very much for your interest. And as you've heard, we're not going to be voting this tonight, but we will be doing it shortly, and you'll hear from us.
Thank you.
Great. All right, next item is the naming committee. Mr. Lebo.
Fred Lebo, Chair of the Naming Committee. There has been a number of changes that we made in two areas. One was the Park and Recs. The Park and Recs had their own procedures, which were somewhat contrary to the naming committee. So, after probably two and a half years of going back and forth, we actually came up with something where you can see that we've, if you look at the appendix, you can see that we've actually came up with something that goes to the naming committee, and then it starts off there, and then it goes to Park and Recs, and it comes back and so forth. So, there's a whole procedure. If you have a chance, we spent a long time in doing that. That was one of the goals for the last couple of years. The other thing is that I thought we're, hopefully, we're ending some wars. We have two going on, and one is supposed to end next year. I thought the Iraq and the Afghanistan war, people should be honored if one wanted to honor them. So, we put that in now, even though the war actually hasn't ended, but we feel sure at one point it will. That was a change, that was basically the changes that we put in. I think they're good changes, and I hope you'll support it. The naming committee, as long as I've been on, I've been chair since its conception. I always thought there was two things. First of all, I thought the town was better served if we had a standard, and this town did not have a standard. And if you're going to Cambridge, you'll find that there isn't a street corner or a square that you can go to without a name on it because they don't have a standard, and that's one of the problems. I thought there was, I mean, I deal with standards all the time, being an engineer. So, I thought, so I never really supported people that came in. We didn't know who they were. We didn't know what they were. All it required was ten signatures. And then we'd go to town meeting, and since nobody knew who they were at the advisory committee, we just supported it, or at least all but one. The second thing I thought was, what does it really mean to an individual who does get their name put on something, and it goes through a process? I think that's even more important. I think if somebody who deserves to have their name put on something, and they do pass it, I think that's a standard that really means something. So, you know, since we've been on, I mean, you know that we've had Paul Pender, and we've actually renamed a road going to one of the parks. I forgot what it was called. It was, yeah, Skyline, but it wasn't a great name when it started off. It was-- What was, what was it? No, before that. What was the original one? Incinerator Road. I didn't think Incinerator Road was good going into a park, so we changed that. So, we made, you know, Bob Kraft gave the town, I think, $500,000, plus the National Football League gave the town $200,000 for one of our parks. So, where it's been deserved, everybody that's come through gets a very fair hearing. I think this serves the town well. I think this is, when Dave Turner retired, he came up to me and he said, "This is the best thing the town has ever done. Congratulations." I didn't think that was the best thing, but I thought it was a good thing.
Oh, you're so modest.
Yes, right.
You know, they say, "If it's a truth, it's not modesty."
Right. Selectmen Goldstein, can you stop this?
Fred, I want to ask you about something that, as far as I can see, hasn't changed that I want to question. It seems to me that in the Parks and Rec Commission procedures, that exceptional individuals who are going to have a facility bear their name should have made a significant and lasting contribution to the town's Parks and Recreation Systems Programs and Services. And I question whether somebody who made a substantial contribution to the town in some other area but didn't happen to affect the park system, whether that makes them inappropriate for naming. Is there a discussion about this in the first one?
Believe it or not, you've raised the same question that we all had back two years ago. And here's the thing, it does, it goes, ultimately, it goes to Parks and Recs if somebody wants to get their name on something. And it's those people who have to make a recommendation back to us. And they didn't feel, if you remember, there has been things named in this town that people had, other than playing ball at the park, they didn't really do anything else. And that became a question. Now, there's a lot of things to name in town. If you take a look at where we named Paul Pender at the Circle, that was a very appropriate. I think it could have been in actually a park or recreation or something like that. So, it ultimately goes to them, and if they feel that they don't want to have their name on, somebody's name on their park, I think it's their commission that will do it. What happened before was, they would submit something, and it never even came to us. They went right to the Selectmen, to the advisory committee. Things got messed up. So, the way we have it now, at least, we're almost like a clearinghouse, saying, okay, here's something. Where should it go? You have the same issues like with park benches and sidewalk benches. And we don't, we suggest people where, if they want to put a sidewalk or a park bench, and then we send it to the appropriate area, and then they make recommendations that comes back to us. We've had multiple discussions on our former governor and so forth and so on, and that has, I think, resolved itself, and that was, I think, a good resolution. It was a park, it was this, it was that. So, a lot of discussion between the appropriate parties and us.
I know that they've been open-minded in the past--
No, we're not.
About naming recreation facilities--
Yes.
But it just seems to me that just because somebody's focus might have been in the arts or public works or something other than Parks and Rec, I don't think it should disqualify them as a matter of our regulations from having a parks facility.
You know, if it, you know, we've made a lot of comments. This has gone back and forth between Park and Recs and the naming committee. And if somebody was in the arts, I think we have a lot of areas in town where they could be, they could be honored. Okay, I think we will run out of those areas. I think we have to stop looking at Park and Recs again. But there's nothing here, as you know, that is, you know, is etched in stone. And if you'd like to come before the naming committee, we'd be happy to take your recommendation and pass it on.
You actually have in the past.
Yeah, we actually have, and we'll take anybody's comment. The nice thing that this has done, I think every year that I had served on the advisory committee, I think there was at least one to three applications to have something named. And that's gone down to like one every three or four years, and I think that's, and that's fine.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes?
I'm trying to just understand the process that will work here. As I read it under 4.1, the Park and Recreation Commission has their guidelines, which are the ones that are set out in 3.0.
Right.
And those guidelines are very close to your, to the naming committee's general guidelines with the exception of the fact that they look for a contribution or some involvement with a particular place or to the parks.
Sure.
Correct?
Yes.
And then, so then they come to you. They make that recommendation. And under 4.2, there's a recommendation, not only from Park and Rec, but from the naming committee. Do you see the naming committee vetoing, or is this going to be a cooperative process? What do you see the role of the naming committee once Park and Rec has done their due diligence and made a recommendation?
You know, if we go back a little bit in time and we go back to the Puttaham Golf Course, the Puttaham Golf Course, when it was first brought to us, Bobby, they wanted to have, they want to have the Skyline Park named after Bob. And we simply asked the question of John Bane, who sits on it, said, "But what did he do in Skyline Park?" Now, I know what he did at the golf course because we had many battles over whether it was going to be privatized or not, and he did a lot of work on that. So, he came and said, "Well, wait a minute. Maybe we should, maybe we should name, we suggested maybe naming the clubhouse." And that's how it was. So, he went back to his committee, and they wanted something more grandiose. So, they came back and said, "No, we want the golf course named after him."
So, you see sort of a collaborative process?
Yeah, we're not unreasonable--
Back and forth?
We're not unreasonable people, as one might think.
I have sort of an odd follow-up, but I have this foggy recollection that when Skyline Park was named, there was some kind of suggestion that it was a temporary name until the permanent name was--
Well, it was--
Decided.
Obviously, we were looking, I started with my uncle, but we started looking at somebody who was willing to put some, help the town with putting in significant money into the park. So, after we, I think, beat it around quite a bit, we made a very generic name called the Skyline Park, hoping that now we had a park that we could either name somebody again that--
Okay, so if there was a significant change, improvement, or whatever, the option would be to rename it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
That naming opportunity is still there.
That naming opportunity, we have a lot of naming opportunities in our parks.
Right, okay, now I get it.
Somebody came, called me up, and wanted a street changed. And I said, "Streets are a lot harder to change. It's on every map." I said, "If you can come up with some other, not too significant," I said, "we'd certainly consider your application." I said, "I think it's a little tougher to name streets, though we could name our own streets something different, but then people wouldn't know where to go when the maps are all changed, and it would be a problem." So, I think this works well for everybody. It's taken a long time to put this together, it's like five years. But a lot of people have given us inputs, and I think it's served the town well. have given us inputs, and I think it's, I think it's served the town well.
Okay, any other, yes?
Two, two very quick things. First, the Adopt a Pole application, Flag Day Memorial, since we're not doing Flag Day anymore, maybe we should be adapting that Adopt a Pole program to Brookline Day, or maybe look into something, something different. Memorial Day or something.
Nobody came to us to say that they weren't doing it. I know, I know Katie has her father's name, it's always, it's always a screwed up flag somewhere at Coolidge Corner, but if you have a, if you have a comment, I mean, we'll, if it's, if it's not that, I know this, this is something that started, I think, with Jim Nicholson. I think that's when that started. But if you want to change it to something else, I'll certainly bring it back for the committee.
Something, yeah, I'll probably, probably mention it to you, but...
This would be on page nine, so we want to change this to some other name. Okay, that's, that's a very good comment.
And the other thing is, is just, by the way, I think, you know, Estelle Cates would be someone who I'd love to see something named for in the, in the near future.
Okay, now...
Take this offline, but, you know...
Okay, this is offline. So, the, so she didn't work for the town, so that, that would be fine. We, we could do that, if somebody came to us. I, I don't, I don't like bringing up, we're not a group that brings in names. If it was a, if we go back to, to Puttaham Golf Course, that got in when, when a, we, I felt, and I think the, the committee agreed with me, that there should be a waiting period for people who work for the town. So, we put in a two-year waiting period before it was even considered. I mean, as soon as Tom DeMayo retired, everybody wanted to name something after Tom DeMayo. I said, "In two years, if you want to bring up Tom DeMayo's name, and you want to bring it in, that's fine," and we all said, "Because there's a lot of, 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 whether it be hostility or gratitude or whatever, there's always something that as soon as somebody who leaves the town." So, we have a two-year waiting period. With Estelle, you're absolutely right. She, I, she didn't work for the town, she was a volunteer, and I don't think that would, would, would come under a two-year waiting period. And, by the way, just for fact, she was my third-grade tutor, which is, which is the reason that I am the way I am today.
It also may be the reason that she should be elevated to sainthood.
I'll put that in the, the new rule.
Just following up on sort of the technical point raised by Selectman Goldstein on page nine, the, the language there could be modified and make it sort of general instead of specific. It could say, "Adopt a pole," and then just memorials if you delete the word Flag Day.
Sure.
And then after that, if you change the next sentence to read, "There are approximately..."
Wait a minute.
You, you can still have all of the same...
Where are you, what line is that?
I'm saying the first line after the heading.
Yeah.
If you delete along the town's Flag Day Parade route...
Yeah.
And just put the word "there," T-H-E-R-E...
Oh.
"Are approximately 140 light poles on which," it, it would get you all the way, I, I don't think you'd need to change anything else. Just remove the reference to Flag Day.
I will have Melissa call a meeting within the next few weeks. Can we amend it? I'm, I'm over.
Let me ask, let me mention that I was talking, I believe, to Bill McGorty about this, and he might suggest that we designate other streets at this point, so maybe we need to...
Additional places?
We need to, well, more consolidated, because I believe the, the Flag Day route was, you know, very long, and if, if that's not going to be the, the parade route any longer, we might look at a different street or a different neighborhood or...
But I, I think...
I think actually you don't have, it doesn't need to be, that's my point. You could have them anywhere.
I, I think Betsy's suggestion is that in the heading, the words Flag Day Memorial come out, and then it just say, it just say, "There are approximately 140 light poles."
Or, or if there could get to be more, you could add more, but it doesn't matter where they are.
There are light poles.
Yeah, I think that might be better.
On which an American flag and commemorative...
So, there are, so there, we'll just read, so there are approximately 100...
There are, there are light poles.
Take the number out, because there might be more added.
Oh.
But then it goes on to talk about Veterans Committee and...
Well, I only, I figured they'd go through veterans in any case, right? If they're...
That's how usually the flags usually are, and that's...
Right, but, well, I guess that applies to Brookline Day too, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's just honoring a veteran. It, it wouldn't need to be attached to a particular event. I mean, it could be Memorial Day, it could be Brookline Day, whatever, if you want to do this.
Would you want to name that the...
Yeah, you're, you're, you're basically...
Call it Brookline Day?
You're basically supporting a flag.
But we wouldn't put a specific day in there, just generic.
Yeah, Adopt a Pole, right. I was saying, make it generic, in other words, not associated with a particular special event, but, but Adopt a Pole, and then that leaves it open to wherever and whenever.
I'm fine, if a few people want to amend that, that would be fine. I don't think any...
Do it now.
Let's do it now.
Okay.
I'm sure everybody's thinking of me, so that's, that's gonna be fine. Adopt a pole, "There are approximately..."
No, there are light poles on which an American flag. We can take out the approximately...
Yeah, take out the number.
Yeah, we take out, but there are light poles.
Yeah, right, take out the number because that could change.
Change.
And then the rest of it, it seems is pretty good. It's, if, if we're agreed that it goes through the Veterans Celebrations Committee, which I'm perfectly happy with.
Though...
The last sentence.
Yeah, last sentence.
Take out the last sentence.
Oh, okay, right, because of the date.
Flags are, okay.
Yeah.
Aren't they usually up for a particular time, or is it, we're taking that out?
It's...
You know, we can say something like, "The flags are in place for a reasonable period of time."
Seasonal or...
Seasonal, yeah.
Yeah, maybe mounted for...
Or we could just take out the last sentence.
No, 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 but in the, in the first line too, it says, "Commemorative flag and commemorative plaque may be mounted for a period of three years," it should, 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 you should just say it seasonally.
Are mounted seasonally for a period of three years?
So, we're, I think, I think the three years is, is probably not something we want to change, right?
No.
No, right now, because you pay $45 for the, for the three years.
It's just the last sentence.
If you lose the last sentence, then they can be put up and taken down whenever.
Why don't we do that?
All right.
I'm, I'm okay with that, so we're just going to eliminate the last sentence.
Yeah.
Kate, you following this? She always does, doesn't she?
Well, am I glad I was only up here for two minutes? I promised I wouldn't be.
Well, we got nothing else to talk about.
That's right, that's right, we're gonna fill the tank.
If I get home before 10 o'clock, my family gets suspicious.
You'll find out what your family's doing.
Do we, just so that people are not misled, do you want to say that they are mounted seasonally for a period of three years? I mean, they're not, they're not, with the last sentence being deleted, is there a suggestion?
I think that's, I think that's fine. I think if we put seasonally, I, I like that.
Because they're not, they, they are taken down during the winter.
Mounted seasonally for a period of three years, I think that's fine.
I think it works.
That way, there, it'd be up to...
All right.
We've got another hour, do we want to do anything else?
That, 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 don't read anymore.
And I, it's not a thing, I served 23 years on the advisory committee, I add up my hours, it's 5,000 hours, it's two and a half years that I didn't, that I didn't get paid for.
Who would want to know that?
But you got some pizza out of the deal.
I got, you know, one of my lasting things, I, when I made a speech, I said, "The two hottest things I ever did was getting rid of rent control and getting food for the advisory committee." That's, that's the longest argument. You think we were arguing over, you know, the school budget, 80 million, no problem.
Are, are we prepared to adopt this amended set of guidelines now?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will move that we adopt the amendments to the naming committee guidelines. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wischinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the fact that you have not totally ceased to put in hours for the town.
No, I'm, I'm still on it, and, you know, it's interesting, just a week and a half ago, a woman called me up from, from, somebody from the fire department, and said, "I got a noise in my apartment," and she said, "And it vibrates all the time," and I'm thinking, "Oh, God, I don't want to get into this," and, and I start asking her questions. I said, "What's your number?" She says, "No, I don't want to give you my, I don't, I don't want to give you my number because my phone is tapped and my computer is tapped." I said, "Listen, let, let me send you over to the health department."
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for that.
All right. We have two more items, and we might be home by 8:30. Next item is a, a reappointment of the Town Administrator under the Town Administrator Act. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members of the board?
No comment, I accept that I support the reappointment.
Okay.
And, and we, basically, it is on the existing terms and conditions with a slight increase in the transportation allowance.
That's correct. Pretty much same as it was before.
We, so we are welcoming Tim Tebow...
I don't think so.
To New England and resigning Mr. Kleckner.
Oh, in one week.
Right, right. How about that? All right, I move that we approve and execute a three-year employment contract with Town Administrator Melvin A. Kleckner, to be effective September 15th, 2013, to September 14th, 2016. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Ah, okay, we should do that too. Selectman Wischinski?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Well, now that we've got his contract, I guess we should appoint him Town Administrator. So, I move that we reappoint Melvin A. Kleckner as Town Administrator under the Town Administrator Act. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Selectman Wischinski?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank, and, and thank you very much for your service over the last three years, and there are, there have been some difficult times, some challenging issues, and the town has been and continues to be in good hands, so thank you very much.
Quick three years, too.
Yes, right, how did they go so fast? Okay, and then we have one more item. Ah. That's funny, I'm trying to think, why would we, who's, trying to figure out terms here, just a second. All right, so there's got to be...
Do you want to hold it until next week?
No, 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 it's just that there ought to be, they ought to be in pairs, and for some reason...
There are two each, two of each.
All right, two, all right, fine, 14, 14, 15, 15, yes, you're right, all right. So, we'll actually...
Just in alphabetical order.
Yeah, right, okay, so offer them up to us, and we'll, we'll take the first one.
There are two, this is the appointments to the trustees of Walnut Hill Cemetery, there are two existing vacancies, and there are two applicants who we've, we've actually met with this evening, and so I would call for a vote on filling the vacancy that expires in 2015, Robert Cook.
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy Anderson, and Gerard Hayes for the vacancy that expires in 2014.
Aye.
Very good.
Okay. And that concludes the business of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, June 11th.